Commissioner Cummings, can you hear me?
Commissioner Cummings, can you hear me now? Ma'am. Good afternoon. As the record showed, we call this regular County Commission Board meeting to order at 3:02 PM on June 13th. We'll start with the invocation and the pledge, who will be presented by Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Commissioners, we're pleased today to have our invocation offered by Pastor Rudy Ferguson, Senior, pastor of the New Birth Tabernacle of Praise Church. Pastor Ferguson, if you would come now to lead us in prayer, it'd be followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
What you're hearing, they're trying to pipe Commissioner Cummings in.
Yes, sir.
We can, I think she can hear her, but we're not sure we can hear her.
Understood.
She can hear us.
Pastor first, how you doing, sir?
Well, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. Let us bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for how you have touched and blessed. We thank you, Father, because you did something that we couldn't do ourselves. You woke us up. And for that, we say thank you. We thank you, Father, because without you, Lord, we would be like a ship without a sail, going with the currency of the waves without a purpose. But now, Father, this moment is time we have come to this sacred place. Amen, that we may be able, Lord, to do your will and to do your way. We pray now, Lord, that in this place, in this time, in this moment, that the people that you have empowered, you have ordained, to do this thing for you, Father. Give them the strength, the courage, to continue to face the challenges that come before us. Let they speak for the people, and walk for the people, and stand up for the people. Father, we need you today to be God as you already know how to be God. We'll always give your name the praise and glory for all things and all things. We thank you now, Father, because this time and this moment, we've come here to this place that the world, and that this city, and that this county would know, there is a voice in the wilderness speaking for the people. Now, Father, we ask all these blessings, in your son, Jesus Christ's name, we pray. We believe you've heard this prayer and received this prayer by saying amen.
Amen. Let us stand now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so we'll start today's agenda off with awards and presentations. I'll have the first award and presentation being presented for LGBTQ Pride Month. Would those representatives please step forward? All right. The proclamation reads, whereas our nation was founded on the principles of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for many Americans. And whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based on race, ethnicity, religion, class, gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, age, mental or physical disability, and to be supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas the month of June was chosen to commemorate the events that took place over 50 years ago at the Stonewall Inn in Manhattan, New York, on June 28, 1969, and is often viewed as the beginning of the modern lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer rights movement. And whereas the month of June has become a nationally recognized moment to celebrate and honor the way LGBTQ plus Americans have overcome adversity and enriched our society, and to acknowledge those who continue to advocate for legal and social equity. And whereas Leon County celebrates and honors its diverse LGBTQ plus community that includes people of all ages, races, ethnicities, religions, and professions. And whereas Leon County strives to be a community where everyone is celebrated for our differences rather than being limited by what divides us. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that the month of June 23 be known as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in recognition and celebration of the many ways in which the history and culture of LGBTQ plus Americans and the advancements, discoveries, and achievements of LGBTQ plus Americans have contributed to the history, culture, and social fabric of this nation and of Leon County. It's assigned by myself and attested to by the county administrator.
Thank you, Chairman Maddox, Commissioners. Thank you so much for this proclamation. Pride is a time to celebrate. It's a time to be proud, and it's a time to live authentically. It has always mattered, but this year, pride matters so much more. Yesterday, June 12, was the anniversary of the Pulse nightclub massacre. We remember how a gunman filled with hate opened fire on our Orlando LGBTQ community, killing 49 and wounding 53 innocent souls. And while we would hope that this hateful act would be an isolated incident, we have seen a rising wave of hatred and attacks throughout this year on our community. Pride is a time to say enough is enough. The LGBTQ, the LGBTQ, see, even we get sometimes tongue tied. The LGBTQ community will not be erased. We will not hide. We are committed. And thank you again, Chairman and Commissioners, for joining us in that commitment to stand up and to fight for a world where no one has to fear being themselves, where love overshadows hate. Thank you.
Next, I think, only as you may have a presentation of award or proclamation by Commissioner Comban. Commissioner Comban?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This proclamation is for Tallahassee Community College. I have President Murdaugh with me and his staff. TCC was ranked 101 best and brightest companies to work for in the nation. Companies, not colleges, which is just, you know, such a great achievement. Whereas Tallahassee Community College has offered a high-quality post-secondary education since 1966 in Leon County. TCC's mission is to provide a challenging and positive work experience through collaboration and innovation. Whereas TCC currently has an average of 1,500 faculty, staff, and administrators in Leon County. Whereas Dr. Jim Murdaugh has been the president of TCC for almost 13 years. Whereas President Murdaugh's personal mission is to make TCC the college of choice for students, the employer of choice for faculty and staff, and the partner of choice for the community. Whereas Tallahassee Community College was recognized as one of the top 101 best and brightest companies to work for in the nation by the National Association for Businesses' Resources for the year of 2022. Whereas TCC is the first community college in the nation to receive this award. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, we recognize Tallahassee Community College's diligent work to be a leader in our community and express our sincere gratitude for being an employer of Leon County that creates a positive culture, provides jobs to our community, and continuously works to be an employer of choice, dated this day, 13th day of June, 2023. Before I pass it to Dr. Murdaugh, I want to say that TCC, other than the school board, is the largest employer in my district and District Two in Leon County.
Thank you so much. Commissioner, thank you so much for the recognition, and thank you all for what you do all the time. I will say, our college receives a lot of recognition for what we do, and it's always welcome. And I'm joined today by our Chair, Eugene Lamb, and our Chair-elect, Mr. Jonathan Kilpatrick, who also wished to convey their thanks. But let me say this from my heart. It's great to get recognition nationally. It's even better to get recognition at home from those of you that we serve. So thank you for that very much.
As they take those photos, next we have another proclamation by Commissioner Comban, recognizing Gail Grissette for her efforts to secure the donation of an antique piano for the Fort Braden Community Center.
Whereas Mr. Buddy Garrison and Ms. Gail Grissette are members of the Fort Braden Community. Mr. Garrison's daughter had been gifted a Kawaiu piano when she was younger and no longer needed it. Whereas Ms. Grissette worked with Mr. Garrison in the county to coordinate the donation of the piano to the Fort Braden Community Center. Whereas Ms. Grissette played many different instruments, the piano being the main one since she was little. Whereas she taught music since she was 16 years old at various schools to students of various levels of ability. Whereas the Fort Braden Branch Library has started community music jam in order to use music as a tool to bring people together. Whereas Ms. Grissette's goal for the piano donation to the Fort Brady Community Center is to create a space that is dedicated to music, open for all individuals, and uses music to bring people together. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we honor and express our gratitude to Buddy Garrison for his generosity with piano dedication and Gail Grissette's dedication to creating a love for music in the Fort Braden Community, dated this 13th day of June, 2023, signed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida.
I just want to say, Fort Braden Community Center is very, very important to me, and the fact that we are now holding a monthly music jam and inviting people out, but we're having to have it in the library, and you know, you're supposed to be quiet in a library, right? Once a month, we're not. 6:00 to 7:30, we're making music. It's been just a wonderful way to bring the community together, to meet new people. So thank you. We really appreciate it, and I want to especially thank Buddy, because it's a Kawaiu piano. So this is not an antique, unknown brand. It's really a nice piano, just sat in his home for a long time, because his daughter didn't continue it, playing it. So thank you very much.
Couldn't think of a better place for it, and we're going to waive the storage fees.
Congratulations, and thank you so much. As they, as they take that photo, next up, we'll have Commissioner O'Keefe presenting a proclamation recognizing the Victory House Community Resource Center at Shady Grove Primitive Baptist Church for its community outreach programs.
Can you hear me, Commissioner? Can you hear me? If, don't be shy, all right.
I think that I'm an honorary member of Shady Grove.
You are. You are.
Well, then, I don't know why you're not in the photo.
I need to get on down there.
Well, I will, I will kick us off. I'm very excited about this one. Whereas Victory House Community Resource Center was established in 2017 as a faith-based organization and a social services component of Shady Grove Primitive Baptist Church. And whereas Victory House Community Resource Center is committed to providing assistance, resources, and inspiration to the community through hunger relief, educational support, youth empowerment, and elderly assistance services. And whereas Victory House Community Resource Center's largest program to date is the food distribution program, serving nearly 600 individuals each month of varied ages and background. And whereas food insecurity in the community has increased, and their capacity to store and process food has reached its limits, Victory House Community Resource Center is currently undertaking an expansion project slated to be completed by the end of 2023. And whereas Victory House Community Resource Center also serves the community through their Roots, Shoots, and Sprouts gardening and entrepreneurship program, the Grown and Techy Technology Literacy Program, the Shop with a Boss gifting and mentoring program, and the Home for the Holidays Collegiate Housing Program. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we celebrate Victory House Community Resource Center for its vision and leadership in providing a world that is healthy and whole, and where people are equipped to reach their full potential and fulfill their purpose while achieving life's triumphs and navigating life's challenges, dated this 13th day of June, 2023, signed by all the Commissioners, County Administrator Vince Long. Thank you.
Quickly, we just want to thank you, Board of Commissioners, for this esteemed honor and pleasure. We thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe, for your partnership and your support. And yes, Commissioner Proctor, you are indeed an honorary member. I want to thank you, Commissioner Maddox, for your help over the years as well in this entire community. We do not stand alone. I'm glad that I'm not standing here by myself today. It is a team here that makes this happen for what we call the eastern communities of Leon County. Some people call it the country. We call it the east side. So thank you. We appreciate you.
All right, you ready for a lot of pictures?
A lot of pictures.
All right, everybody in here? Which way do we want to go? I have nothing about photos.
Yes, ma'am, I hear you.
Thank you so much.
You hear?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, we got one more.
Good picture. Thank you. All right, as they finish taking those pictures, I think I got one more proclamation that I do. Proclamation recognizing June 11, 2023, as Race Amity Day, that will be presented by Commissioner Proctor. Church say amen.
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 Shady Grove didn't get their shout on up here, but I know what y'all can do on Sunday morning. I know what you can do. Commissioners, this is a real pleasure, honor, to have Dr. Kerry McCord. He's my personal physician, and for him to come today representing the amity of Bahá faith community. And on Sunday, we represented the board, but we indicated that we would recognize them here at center stage during our meeting. But I did extend comments and commendation to the church on Sunday, but it's today that we want to present formally this proclamation. Dr. McCord, whereas Leon County, Florida Board of Commissioners, support the great seal of the United States of America, which bears inscription E. Pluribus Unum, which translates from Latin as "Out of Many, One." And whereas the greatest asset of Leon County is its people. And whereas Leon County comprises multicultural, multi-ethnic, and multiracial citizens. And whereas friendship, collegiality, civility, respect, and kindness are commonly shared ideals of the collective citizenry of Leon County. And whereas, towards E. Pluribus Unum Initiative has invited communities across the United States of America to join in introspection and reflection on the beauty and richness of the diverse peoples of this great nation, while reaching out with the spirit of amity towards one another annually on the second Sunday in June, designated as Race Amity Day. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we recognize Sunday, June 11, 2023, to be celebrated in the county of Leon as Race Amity Day. And today, we urge all citizens of Leon County to be patient, kind, and respectful of one another, cognizant of this day, dated this 13th day of June, 2023. It's signed by all the members, Dr. McCord, of the county commission. And as you can see, these signatures, that Bill Proctor's signature is the clearest one.
I noticed that.
You notice this chicken scratch down here, but that's the best, that's what they do, doctor. I just wanted to explain this, because you get home and look at it a little bit. Congratulations, and we offer you a word.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, thank you for having me here. I represent the administrative body of the Bahais of Leon County. We're a small but somewhat mighty group. I also represent the task force that was charged with preparing for and delivering a program worthy of Race Amity Day. Amity means friendship. Establishing bonds of friendship across lines that have once and still do divide us, to celebrate diversity. And in fact, my wife, Dr. Michelle Mitchum, the owner and publisher of Tallahassee Woman Magazine, whose mission it is to represent all of the women in Pinellas County wished Pinellas County. See there? I'm from Pinellas County, by the way. For those of you who've ever been there, sorry about that. From Leon County and the city, to see themselves in the picture and recognize that we're all members of one human family. And I would like to close with this passage from scripture that says, "If you desire with all your heart friendship with every race on earth, your thought spiritual and positive will spread. It will become the desire of others, growing stronger and stronger until it reaches the minds of all men." Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move now to the regular agenda. We're now on census to be heard on non-agenda items. Mr. Administrator, do we have any census to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have several speakers to be heard on non-agenda items or consent items. I'll start. We have a few in the chambers and a few on Zoom. Mr. Chairman, I'll start with those in the chambers. First up, we have Max Epstein.
Mr. Epstein, you have three minutes. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Hello, Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Road. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item Three, the reorganization and hiring of Ben Pingree.
That is an agenda item?
On agenda, or it's consent.
Yeah, but it was pulled.
So then I'd like to wait then for that to come up. Is that, I'm sorry.
Am I ordered to wait for this for the pull portion? Because it's pull items.
Either one.
Oh, wait. Any other speakers on Item Three that were on non-agenda items? Okay. We're going to wait on that.
One others.
One other, okay. Next speaker.
John Hendrick, Item Number Five, Consent.
I thought I read that right. Commissioner Max.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, before we do this. I consider, am I wrong? Am I right ordered by considering consent to be on the agenda or no?
This is the portion of the agenda where we take up consent, speakers for consent, and any other non-agenda items.
Got it. Okay, okay, got it. Oh, on consent, right.
Right, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to make sure I was in the right section of this.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm John Hendrick. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Commission and Social Justice Committee of the First Presbyterian Church. I'm speaking specifically on the homeless item, which y'all considered at your workshop last go around. Obviously, we're very pleased with most everything you've done with that work. Obviously, the big elephant in the room is getting the money together and the housing together for affordable housing for more homeless in the community. So that's the big item that's ultimately going to have to be dealt with. But specifically, we're commenting today on the item dealing with the commission, which we suggested we felt we needed very strongly on this. Right now, it's being proposed that that should be some sort of conjunction with a continuum of care. But the continuum of care is primarily a group of providers. By the way, other members who couldn't be here that you've met with prior are Debbie Gibson and Carol Weiser. They couldn't be here today. They're focused on the agency's goals, services, agenda, but it's much more a day-to-day thing. Their meetings don't give time and space for thinking through long-term issues and solutions, because they're working on the day-to-day services, which are so important in the community. The five-year plan, for example, is really short on verifiable goals. It talks about courage, support, no real metrics in there. We're trying to get to a committee that looks at the larger, longer-term picture and could tackle whatever problems are and consist whatever solutions, consist you with whatever solutions are by Commissioners, the COC, staff, and focus on these longer-term solutions. Half of the businesses, communities of faith, the school system, universities, hospitals, law enforcement, put all these heads together, other general people in the community with different experience, together with our unsheltered and dealing with the unsheltered neighbors. And of course, we'd be happy to participate in any of these outreach coordinators' efforts, but we feel these would focus more on the short-term efforts day-to-day versus the longer-term. We would like to see the COC really be a part of our conversation rather than their con, us be a part of their conversation. con, us be a part of their conversation. And this is done in many other localities for the, to do the Citizen Commission to supplement the provider networks like COC. We aren't trying, inventing something new. This is just a way of broader and out in the community so we can deal constructively with this matter and by offering ideas that are not more of the same as the existing system. So we appreciate your time in, in thinking about this, and we think this would be a valuable addition to what you've already done. And we look forward, however it's done, to continue to working with you. Thank you all very much.
Next speaker, Stanley Sims on Item Five.
Name and address for the record, please, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Stanley Sims. Uh, my wife still allows me at 1320 Avondale Way. I want to thank you guys for, um, hopefully the, the ratification of, of the money that you're gonna use to alleviate some of the business, the problems that the small businesses have occurred on North Monroe, downtown, on Pensacola Avenue. As you know, I am the Executive Director of a nonprofit organization with the acronym HELP, Helping Entrepreneurs Leverage Prosperity. And in your ratification, your, um, services will only deal with the homeless that are impacted, not the businesses that have been negatively impacted by this environmental barrier for such a long time. And so what we have done, and when I say we, HELP, uh, as of today at six o'clock, I'll be going back to the incubator with doming. We have brought together some small other businesses that are growing in need of sustainability, and we want to put together a proposal at OOV that will offer a pilot program for those manu, um, small businesses in those designated area. As you know, social entrepreneurship is not something that's new. It was brought to our county several years ago by a former mayor, Andrew Gillum. There is proven record, there's accountability, it's a research-based program. And while I'm standing here, I'm gonna cheat a little bit because I'm not gonna be able to stay tonight. Uh, I have already seen the proposal in which, um, the Housing Department is doing for game, uh, Orange Avenue, and I just want to let you all know that's my cousin. She is doing an absolutely great job with this project. And not only is she's doing a great job, Commissioner O'Keefe, when I have, um, did I say your name right?
It's O'Keefe.
Why y'all laughing at me?
It's O'Keefe.
Oh, okay, because I change people's names, y'all know that. Uh, when I have people on the street stopping me and asking me, how do we get in? That is a transformation from where, see, we looking at where it is now. I know what Brenda went through before it got to where it is, and I mean Ms., Ms. Williams. And so to change the mindset of people, that takes commitment and leadership, and so I'm just so excited about that. And we, HELP, can change the mindset of these small businesses with this proposal, doctors. That I'm getting ready. But that's what it takes, and I love the fact, I look at, uh, Commissioner Caban. It's been a very long time since I've seen ordinary people from District Two coming up here getting proclamations, Mr. Holes. I gotta go because, uh, my time up and I don't want to get in trouble. But thank you all, thank you, thank you. I'm going to get some more learning and I'll see y'all at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Okay, next speaker, uh, we're back on Max Epstein. We're in the proper posture for the speaker.
All right, so look, on, on Item Number Three, I think all the rest of the speakers on Item Number Three. I am, I am more than willing to hear anything you have to say about Item Number Three. What I, what I would, what I would ask is, is that we be as civil as we can as we speak on Item Number Three. Mr. Epstein started his, his comeouts, his comments with, uh, Ben, and I can't tell you what to say or what not to say, but what I ask is that if it's any kind of personal attack, that, that it be more professional than anything else. That's the way I would like this meeting run. Now, like I said, I, I can, I can, you can, you can say anything you want to, but I would prefer that we keep things as collegial and civil and, and as professional as we can and, and not much more on, on the personal when it comes to the attack. Thank you, sir.
I'm professional, so, thank you. Uh, Max Epstein, 1001, I'm here on the reorganization and the hiring of, uh, Ben Pingree, and there's a lot of controversy around Mr. Pingree, and I'm speaking from what has been seen in the public domain. This seems to the public that this is another hiring that has happened behind the scenes. The first time Mr. Pingree was hired was in a bar without a national search and a handshake agreement to head the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency. And this is after ethics violations that occurred in Waculla County, including no-bid contracts and land deals that were not reported. This is all fact. I would like the county here to say no to the reorganization until a nationwide search is performed, that this job is posted, and the very best person for this position is found. And I do have some questions. Were county employees considered for this position? Um, I've dealt with Berry in the fall, in the permitting department. They know a lot of stuff. Were they given an opportunity to move up in the world? Um, this really just shows to the people that we don't know what's going on. Why is Ben Pingree no longer with Blueprint? We have a city commissioner who is suing Blueprint right now for Sunshine Act violations, right? So there've been many of us in this community that have dealt with Blueprint over the years, and I think this is an exciting opportunity to fix what's wrong with Blueprint. So you really need to think about this because the county has done a good job of insulating itself. Remember, it got away from the CRA? That was when the FBI was around. Do we want to not have that firewall here at the county? We have text messages from Scott Maddox. Scott Maddox, that said, "Cut the deal, Blueprint is yours." "Thanks, Hefe." That's what he responded with. Is this how the county wants to hire people? And I have a great respect for this board and the county administration, but this is not a good look, and I encourage you again to vote no until that is nationally advertised. And I have personal experience with Ben, who said something false during an environmental permitting for a Blueprint project, and I have proof of that if you'd like to see that. Um, he's being hired for this position. We need the best qualified person. Thank you.
Thank you. So for clarification, and this is a, a portion of the agenda where there is no comment from, now on the pool items, is there a comment? Okay. Uh, but, but for clarification, because this is a pool item, right? For clarification, I want everyone to understand, we do not hire and fire county staff. We hire and fire the county administrator. And so even if this didn't pass tonight, it's still the county's administrator's prerogative as to who he hires and fires within the organization. Now, we, we could, in fact, you know, say we didn't want it, but at the end of the day, the only person, the only two people that we manage is the county administrator and the county attorney. And, and by process also, to the way he goes about hiring and firing his staff as well as the county attorney, they also dictate those things too. And so I would almost say this being on the agenda today was almost of, of, of a, of informative, prefer, professional courtesy to get our, our input on it, but I do want you all to understand, even if we, again, did not approve today, this man can do what he wants to with his staff. The only recourse we have is to discipline him, but he can do what he wants to with his staff, so can the county attorney. So as, as we provide comments and the things that you may ask for, I want, I want, I want the audience out there, those who speak, to understand the, the, the way the power, separation of powers here works when it comes to staff and the commission. Other thing, and I'll, I'll say this and I'll let the next speaker speak, is we have a, a, a wall there whereby we deal with the county administrator, the county administrator deals with his staff. So for example, if I get an email with someone requesting something, I send that to the county administrator, the county administrator then, then sends that to staff to give us a reply back as to what's going on, actually sending it back to him, but then he sends it to us. So, so even from that standpoint, when we say, when I say that we manage these two people and that's it, that's who we manage. When we, when we want information, we go to these two people and that's it, that's who we go to and they're responsible for getting us answers back. So I just, I just want to make that completely clear as we continue to have comments. And like I said, just, and, and, and thank you, Mr. Epstein, you were very factual, we kept it, we kept it in the lines, there was no personal attacks. I would prefer that we stay that way, but I do want people to understand exactly how this works as far as the separation of powers between staff and the commission. Next speaker, Mr. Administrator.
Next speaker, Jerry C.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, for that explanation.
Yes, ma'am.
Very helpful. The analyst report came out for the United Way the other day, 32304, 84% poverty and below. The money that we put into Blueprint from our taxes ought to have been able to ameliorate that over the past years, but their direction has been in other places. We, the people, would like to have a community that's concerned about all of the people and to have one zip code which is huge to come in at 84% in this little town, 84%, I believe, oh, oh, one is 60%. We have issues here. We have things that have to be taken care, should have been taken care of. Our mistake has been to not realize that you have allowed, or the organization allows other people to be in control of the money, the direction, and that would be Mr. Long and his people. And they have taken that money and done other things with it that we didn't want them to do. See, we voted for you, and we thought you would be able to communicate to the people you hire to do what you ask them to do. But when we saw this item where once again, someone's job is protected by their friend and their buddy, we can't afford that anymore. It doesn't work. And we voted for you to fix it. Now, if you're the only ones who can tell them what to do, then so be it, I understand. Then do it. Let's get this thing back on the, the rails we're supposed to be. We shouldn't even have to come down here. If they're giving you information, you might want to double-check that. If they're the only ones who supply you with information, you might want to look at that twice. I know they give you a binder full of information a few days before the meetings. Who can read that? You don't see that as an obstruction? Shouldn't they be giving you things that you can comprehend quickly and apply quickly? You need to begin then, now in light of that information, whether or not you're going to be able to do this job. Because if this is the best you can do, we're all circling the bowl. We can't afford it anymore. And now that we have the explanation, we have to hold you all accountable for what's going on under your watch. And what's going on under your watch is an egregious breach of our trust in you, and I'm simply asking you to fix it. We can't keep bringing our friends on board because they messed up somewhere else. Who does that? Thank you.
Next speaker. Going to Zoom, Stephen Martin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello? Okay. Yeah, I couldn't help but note, Commissioner Maddox's apprehensions once Max Epstein started to say anything. Yeah, Commissioner Maddox is well aware of the community unrest about the party that Mr. Epstein was speaking to, and I read the agenda, and I also read the local newspaper. And when I read the agenda about this appointment, it reads so different than what I read in the paper last week, which granted is from the newspaper, an objective story. So I think it's clear to most people, there is a lot of unrest, and what was mentioned before, just about the appearance of a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes with secrecy and lack of transparency, I think has been borne by this. Now, it's, it is no secret about the controversy in there. Many of us concerned in particular about land use and environmental management under Mr. Pingree. It's no secret. Many of us feel he has a pro-development bias. He's not alone in that, but I think it's important that somebody in his position not have such a bias. Ties to local developers are known about. So there's a lot of stuff that wasn't written in the agenda item that when it's known about, I think gives the commission lead reason to at least deliberate on this before just accepting it as an item of consent. And as was brought up before, the controversies didn't start in this county with this position. They preexisted and gave reason for people to wonder how he got to the current position he's in. So again, I think this needs to be thoroughly vetted by the commissioners and, as Commissioner Maddox says, the county administrator who's making this decision, he does answer to you as a commission, you're supposed to answer to your constituents. So I just wonder how this would turn out if this were left up to a vote by the voters who pay the salaries. Thank you.
Next speaker, Samantha Cadiz.
Name and address for the record, please. Zoom? Are you there?
Hi, uh, I read that to my time. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Uh, next speaker, Ahmed Ibrahim.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hey, I'm just here, uh, I'm a student, I'm just listening in.
Thank you, next speaker.
Final speaker, Will Crowley.
Mr. Crowley, name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, my name is Will Crowley, I live at 2308 Cypress Cove Drive. You know, one thing that I learned studying at the Ask You School of Public Administration is that personnel is policy. Personnel is policy because personnel, the staff, they set the agenda, they frame the issues, they provide analysis, and most importantly, they lead implementation. You can have the most well-thought-out policy, the most sophisticated, uh, uh, thought process, you can include all the stakeholders that you want, but it's the staff who lead implementation. That, my friends, is where the money meets the road. So what policy are we setting with this personnel choice? We've seen a clear deference by the applicant to this position for developers over working people, people who live, work, play, worship in the city of Tallahassee and in the county of Leon. Run out of Waculla for facilitating a corrupt land deal? I watched on Zoom as, uh, the Wallani deal was pushed through, steamrolled through without any public input. They shut down public input under the cover of COVID, using a global pandemic to cover the greed and the avarice of wealthy landowners. When they said, "What is the rush for this decision? Why can't we wait to let people have a real choice and, and, and voice in this matter?" And we were told, "Well, the landowners, you see, they are aged and they must attend to their affairs. They have, they, they have to get their will in order." That was placed over the interests of the community. Gracias, Hefe. I have no doubt that it, uh, who brought me here today, paraphrasing, forgive me, but this is no, not, not, it's not from a screenplay. is no, it's not from a screenplay from The Wire or from The Sopranos. This is in the, our local paper of record text. I tell you what, even if you didn't believe that Scott Maddox got you that job, if it was me receiving that text message, would I say, thank you so much for giving me this job if I didn't believe that he did that? That's outrageous. It beggars belief and it's insulting to the people of this community who deserve better. We deserve better than good old boy politics. We deserve better than backroom deals. We deserve the best our tax money can buy. And I do not believe that the candidate presented to us is that best candidate. Now, I understand this is a formality. The county administrator does have control over hiring and firing, I understand. But I am pleased that this was pulled from consent because I want to see where each of you stand. You have been warned, you have been informed, you cannot say that this was a surprise. So take your opportunity to be on the record because the pattern speaks for itself.
Next speaker.
That concludes our speakers.
Thank you. Item three's been pulled for consent. That's the only item pulled for consent. Is there a motion for consent? Oh, yes, yes, yes. I need a motion and a second to allow Commissioner Cummings to, all right. Motion made by Commissioner Combin, seconded by Commissioner Minor, any objection? Seeing none, Commissioner, Madam Vice Chair, you are allowed to participate via phone. Now, is there a motion for consent? Item number three is already pulled. You had a... Yes. All right. Motion's been made for consent by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Minor, any objection? Seeing none, so it is passed. Who pulled the item? Mr. Administrator?
Commissioner O'Keefe.
Commissioner O'Keefe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pulled this item not because of any one person, and I want to start by saying that I appreciate that the county administrator put this on the record. As all commissioners are made well aware, if we didn't read it before we filed for office, we read it when we got elected, what the charter says, who has responsibilities and what authorities. And we, as the chairman said, we hire and oversee the county administrator. And so I appreciate you bringing this up because we've seen in other governments and agencies when...
I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner O'Keefe. You know what? I'm out, yes, I'm out of order.
Sure. I'll make a motion and then discuss it. I move to accept staff, to accept staff recommendation.
All right. Staff recommendation removed by Commissioner O'Keefe, there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Welsh, I'm sorry, continue your comments, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because, just because when I'm used to seeing overseeing departments and agencies and offices, high-level positions often have internal candidates that often are the most qualified because of their institutional knowledge. However, I always believe best practice is to open applications in the interest of you never know who you will get. And we ought to, when we're choosing high-level officials, we ought to see who would apply. And so instead of me going on and on, mainly I pulled this to allow the county administrator, if you would, to talk a little bit about were there open applications, the process, and if not, why? And then I also want to, I'll start off with the positives, is thank the county administrator because if you look into the item beyond any one person, the act of having a succession plan is unnecessarily rare and puts us in a good position, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about this item, the reorg in general. Commissioner, I'll get to your questions in just a minute. I'll provide a little bit of an overview. Again, as you can see, this was on your consent agenda because I do believe it was very important to, for the board to be apprised of this reorg. So as you all know, there are very few things that I like to talk about more than what makes this organization as highly performing and highly regarded as it is. And make no doubt about it, the item before you speaks directly to that. Commissioners, and you know this story, whether it's the quick and thorough manner with which we respond to and resolve problems on a daily basis, or whether it's the consistent progress we make year after year in accomplishing some very ambitious strategic priorities and bold goals and targets in the strategic plan, or whether it's how we somehow always seem to have the organizational capacity to step up and handle whatever issue comes our way, whether that be a natural disaster, an economic crisis, whether that be a global pandemic. When people ask me, and Commissioners, you get this as well, I know how we do this, whether it's one of our peers in the industry that's asking questions about another national recognition that we've received on a best practice, or whether it's a citizen who expectations have been exceeded in some way in a daily duty that we perform, my answer is always the same. I always say something about the singular talent of the county administrator in answering that question. That was a joke, Commissioners, I was just hoping you were paying attention. Commissioners, the truth is, like any high-performing organization, we are continuously realigning and optimizing our resources, including and especially our human resources, to stay ahead of the curve and continuously making the organization and each other better. I could go into a lot of detail, but that's the bottom line. Now, rarely do reorganizations and realignments rise to the level of your attention. They are happening every day throughout the organization in real time. But as I say in this item, this reorganization was necessitated by the retirements, the anticipated retirements of three critical executive-level positions who represent about 100 years of Leon County experience. Now, we cannot replace these individuals. The very best thing we can do as an organization is to facilitate this transition in a deliberate, in a transparent and in a very thoughtful manner with the important emphasis that we in this county place on succession management, talent retention, and diversity. And make no mistake about this, those are three keys to our success in Leon County. So the organization before you, Commissioners, I believe, like others that I've brought to this commission and commissions in the past, provides for some transition time for a very significant transfer of knowledge to occur. Again, about 100 years in this case with the retirement of these three employees. It ensures the orderly transition of large-scale capital projects, as well as important initiatives and daily operations, which is so critical in our organization across all the functions that we provide in the organization. And importantly, Commissioners, it manages the retention of talent in this organization, which we have invested in for many, many years, decades, as represented in the reorganization that you see before you. And it keeps that talent here in our organization and for the benefit of our community. And let me be very clear about this. If there was talent out there in the industry that were better trained and better prepared than those you see reflected in this organization, one, I would know about it, and two, I'd be talking to them about getting them here. Fortunately for us, because of our efforts, that's not necessary in this reorganization. So Commissioners, finally, we accomplished this reorganization through existing resources. And when this transition is fully implemented, in about 18 months, at no net increase in cost to the county. Finally, finally, to borrow from Commissioner Proctor, finally, finally, I want to thank this board. Your support for our employees and your confidence in this organization at the end of the day is what makes it possible for us to continue to do what we do. So I thank you again. Happy to answer any questions. Let me just say this, of course, a more thorough write-up is written on all the component parts of this reorganization, it's in your agenda materials. And again, I'm happy to speak to any specifics. There were some issues raised tonight. Actually, I'm very happy to address any of those, just in case the board wants to talk more about that. Very happy to address any of those issues and any other questions that you might have. But with that, thanks, Commissioners, and I'll pause for any questions you might have.
Mr. Welsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take an opportunity to say, number one, I fully, we get up here and say all the time how much we appreciate our county administrator and his team and how awesome Leon County is and the personnel and the people that make it operate. And I don't, I don't see how that's changed at this point, right? I mean, the county administrator is, is very good at what he does, and I think most of us have full faith in his ability to run this organization and hire who he thinks is the best, and I would certainly not pretend to know better. Now, the county administrator, obviously, we can hold accountable, but his staff, I think we all would agree, do a pretty good job. And then on that note, I do want to take this opportunity to recognize the other side of this item, which is the retirement of three really incredible assets to Leon County and the deputy county administrator, Alan Rosenwig, and assistant county administrator, Wanda Hunter, and budget director, Scott Ross. I think that those are generational talents that have been around a long time, and those losses are going to be felt, you know, in this, in this organization. And I think that having some overlap with their replacements provides an opportunity to try and soften that blow a little bit. So I know when the time actually comes, Alan and Wanda and Scott and y'all, y'all roll out of here, I think we'll have more opportunity to praise you. But I do want to mention that in light of this item being pulled, you know, these are, these are, you know, top-notch public administration professionals who do an incredible job serving the citizens of this county. And I know we all would agree that we would say we fully expect that not to change with the people that are coming on board. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Combin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to say, I don't want one part of this agenda item to take away the fact that we also had other employees who got promoted. And I want to congratulate, I would like to say congratulations to them as well. I think it's important that we don't get hung up on one part and ignore people who have worked hard through the process, who also deserve to be acknowledged, as well as the three employees who, and assistant county administrators who've been with us for a long time. How I look at this, it's kind of similar to how I would look at my own organization in the private sector. I think it's important that we don't expect or try to micromanage the county administrator. Let's remember that the county administrator is recognized internationally for his duties and his expertise in this field. Does that mean that we'll agree on all decisions? No. But at the same time, if someone in his organization is at fault or does something that misrepresents our position and what we stand for as a local government, then the county administrator, you know, has to report to us on that. And so I think it's just important that we look at this as his track record to be successful and his decision-making to be successful. And if there becomes an issue, for all of us to remember and understand that he's going to be the one sitting in that chair looking at us and explaining if or what something happens. So until then, I'll continue to support his decision-making. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on the item? Commissioner O'Keefe.
Just real quick, I wanted to say I appreciate county administrator making it clear that he's always going to go get us the best person from the county and leverage his notoriety to either steal the best employees from somewhere else, or if the best is here, keep them here. And I appreciate that. And I'm glad Commissioner Welsh brought up how much we are trying to fill some very big shoes. And my first question in the briefing was if we disapprove, are they allowed to retire? And he said, unfortunately, they are. So.
Thank you. Yes.
Just in closing, thank you, Commissioners. If that concludes the speakers, I also just wanted to say for those who spoke tonight that we'll be working very hard to earn their confidence, as we do throughout the organization. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just want to make comment that one thing that was a consensus among all those that spoke was that the county does do a good job of doing their job, and our county administrator has done a good job of leading the organization. For those who are being elevated, there's a big responsibility that's in front of you because those who are walking away take a ton of institutional knowledge with them, and they've done, they've done an amazing job out here and grown up, just like a lot of those who are in this organization, grown up within the organization, even our county administrator himself, again, has grown up through the organization. And so I look forward to seeing those who are, who are being elevated do great things for this organization and fill those shoes, or at least try to come close to filling those shoes as they, as they take on their new roles. Thank you again, Mr. Administrator, for putting this on the agenda. All those in favor of staff recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Commissioner Cummings, you wanted to speak?
Just, just very briefly, I just appreciate the fact that this item wasn't required to be on the agenda, nor does it need ratification from the commission, based on your comments and based on how we know the county are government-structured. And I think we must remember too, that our county administrator is the best county administrator on planet Earth as of last year. He received that award. So as commissioners, we have to place a certain amount of trust in him, and he does a great job of running the county, he does a great job of selecting great employees, and we see that every day, every month, with the performance of all of the employees in the county. And I believe that some of the employees that he selects are those lacking in his expectations. He certainly has the ability, the authority, expertise to recognize that and just do what he needs to do from an administrative standpoint. But I also want to just congratulate those individuals that have worked so hard over the years, have meant their time and talent to the county, as Ms. Hunter, Alan Rosenwig, and Mr. Patton have just done an excellent job, I believe, to transition with promoting other individuals who will have an opportunity to work alongside them for a few months. I think it goes without saying that, 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 I guess, decision by the county administrator is one of the best decisions, I think, one of the best ways for, to learn and to train that on-the-job training with somebody that's been in the position for years. And I don't want to also miss the fact that I believe our county administrator is concerned about diversity, equity, and inclusion as far as our county staff. And we see that in the, you know, the promotion of the individuals, Mr. Lamishington, Bradley, Mr. Penigree, we've got the diversity there. So I believe at this point, Mr. Chair, I would support the reorg because it's not something we had to ratify anyway, however, I believe it there. A problem presents itself. I think we have the assurance that our county administrator is fully capable of handling whatever situation might arise from his selection of individuals to promote and to move forward in his top administration. So thanks again for the opportunity, Mr. Chair, and commending again our county administrator for being transparent, being transparent about the reorg when he really didn't have to get our approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. I believe that is a unanimous vote for item number three. I will move now to general business. Mr. Administrator, item number 17.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Item number 17, you'll recall, is the proposed renaming of the Northeast Branch Library in honor of former Leon County Commissioner Bruce J. Host. Commissioners, last month, the board recalled that you requested the item to consider the renaming of the Northeast Branch Library, and per your renaming policy, this agenda item presents the background information on Commissioner Host and his many contributions to the community. As detailed in your item, Commissioner Host served two terms on the Leon County Commissioner and Leon County Commission representing District Four. And during his eight-year tenure on the commission, Commissioner Host advocated for several important initiatives. initiatives, many important issues, including the construction of the permanent Northeast Branch Library. Commissioner Host's dedication to public service, of course, has continued to the benefit of the community long after his time on, on the Board of County Commissioners, to include his leadership in establishing the Veterans, the Florida Veterans Hall of Fame in 2011, and through his service as State Director of the Selective Service System. This, Commissioners, of course, just scratches the surface, and all of the information is provided here consistent with your policy, and we're seeking your direction on this item. We have no speakers on this item, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, Commissioner Host is with us here today. We want to recognize him. Commissioner, how are you doing today, sir? Is that so much for our community? Thank you so much for being here today. Commissioner Welsh, I believe this is your item. Would you do the honors as the District Four Commissioner?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion before I speak for option one, to rename the Northeast Branch Library after Commissioner Host.
Motion for option one has been made by Commissioner Welsh, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Combin. Commissioner Welsh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is a privilege for me to be able to ask for this item, and I want to thank the members of this board for bringing it back. I want to thank staff for putting together an, an item that reflects, if, to the county commissioner's point, just briefly on the contributions made by Commissioner Host. You know, Northeast Tallahassee in Commissioner Host's time, really, Thomasville Road kind of became the gateway to Northeast Tallahassee in his time. And if you look at his resume, a Colonel in the, in the military for 22 years, eight years on the Leon County Commission, 30 years of his life, I think you could easily argue, you know, all of your life has been dedicated to public service and giving back to your community and making it a better place. And from my perspective, as the current District Four Commissioner, that I have the privilege to, to walk in your footsteps and, and stand in your shadow a little bit, Colonel, and that's, and Commissioner, and that's a big honor to me. I think it's awesome. I saw Commissioner Proctor and you yucking it up a little bit there earlier, and, and that really warms my heart to see that because I think all of us, you know, take a lot of effort to learn from our, from our, those who've come before us and, and who we've had the, the now honor to, to sit in those chairs that really do belong to the people that we serve. And, and so just like I learned from Commissioner Proctor, I've had the, the good fortune to sit down with Commissioner Host on multiple occasions, and, and, and he fills me up with the knowledge and experience and, and situations that he's had, especially serving the constituents of Northeast Tallahassee. So it is my honor and privilege to, to offer this. I think it's perfectly appropriate that the, the library is something that's very prominently seen on Thomasville Road as you head into the gateway to Bradfordville. And, and I think it's completely appropriate, and I would appreciate the Board's support in this renaming. I think that the, the, the library is a great symbol of the commissioner's dedication to community service and to education and to, to making, you know, we know we do a great job with our libraries in Leon County, and, and we don't just offer books, we offer all kinds of things. And I think that Commissioner Host kind of personifies that, right? He's, he offers a lot of things, and, and I think it's completely appropriate. So I welcome anybody's comments, and, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. I, I neglected to recognize the best part of Commissioner Host was his Ms. Host. Thank you so much for being here with us. Ms. Sandra Host, thank you so much for being there with us as well. I have no more, Commissioner Meyer, I'm sorry, just saw you in the queue there. Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, Colonel, Commissioner Host, I just want to thank you for your long service in the military, but also here in Leon County. Ms. Host, it's a pleasure to see you, ma'am. I'll be supporting the motion on the table. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you. I want to indicate to Commissioners that Commissioner Host is always represented with style and with class and with swagger and with command. And I told him moments ago that he indeed had married up, when he married his beautiful wife, Sandra, and they had made a team, if you will. If commissioning can be a team of husband and wife, a pair who set a tone, they certainly were a team of Commissioner, husband, wife that I had not seen prior nor since. And there's great respect for that sense of you all pairing to offer leadership. I wanted just to make one historic note in terms of how we got to each Commissioner having their own aide. Commissioner Host and I shared the same aide, and we had, at that time, two Commissioners share a single aide. And it was clear that I represented the South Side and Commissioner Host represented the Northeast Side. He often went one way and often I went another, and our poor little aide was just torn between the Northeast and the South Side Commissioner. And what happened was Commissioner Host has that colonelmanship about himself, and being a Colonel, the aide tended to hear his voice all the time and never heard mine. So I had never been a Colonel, and I didn't know what to do but cuss a little bit, you know, and, but how you intimidate and get all, so my work was, seemed to be second base. And we indicated to the, our county commissioner that when an aide is split between philosophical, socioeconomic differences is why, as we, I felt it was very important that we have individual aides because one aide can't serve two, two different people, and I was always frustrated. So Commissioner Host, thank you for causing us to have the single aide because me and you could not share the one that we had, and she opted, you know, to stay with you. So you're a very good Commissioner. God bless you all for the years of health and well-being, and we pray that the honor of your name on that building will certainly be a beacon light for many young people and for a community for years to come. God bless you.
All those in favor of motion on the floor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to, briefly.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to commend Commissioner Host for all of the years of service, those eight years of service he provided to the commission, and just wanted to let he and his wife know that the naming of this library is very, very well-deserved. So congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Host, would you come up and give us a few comments, sir?
Chairman Maddox and Commissioners, you've made my day. You've made my week, you've made my month, you've made my year. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I just can't tell you how honored I am to have my name associated with an amenity that is so important to our constituents in Leon County and, and every one of our areas of town. And I guess I'm most grateful that you're not naming it in memoriam. As, as some of you know, in 1991, the new library, the new main library was opened. I guess we got a three-minute rule, so I'll, I'll move quickly on this.
Commissioner Host, you take as much time as you need.
And, and following the opening of the main library in 91, there was a move to provide the community with branch libraries. It was a goal, it was well overdue, it was one of the several reasons I ran for office in 2000. That goal was achieved, and I was very gratified to help open that the Northeast Branch is the first branch in a permanent structure in the county. Another item on my election platform was a Northeast Community Center. That idea was approved, and it was to be in the McCord House that adjoined the library on the same site. As it turned out, for a number of reasons, it just, it just wasn't feasible. And so, to my dismay and disappointment, that plan was abandoned. It was the only item on my agenda for the commission that I wasn't able to accomplish during my tenure, even though I felt strongly that it was needed by the community. I think perhaps to assuage my disappointment, on my retirement in 2000, along with Commissioners' trust in T-shirts, singing to the City Commissioner Steve Meisberg's ukulele, a rendition of Kumbaya, I was surprised with the honor of having the interior of the library named the Bruce J. Host Center. Now we're here in 2023, and that prophecy is fulfilled, this branch, as do the others, now function not only as a modern library, but as a community center in each of the five county districts. They're well-staffed, they're well-equipped, and they're well-utilized. This year, fiscal '23, Northeast Branch, as reported by our current, very capable Northeast Branch Director Kate Brown, held 109 programs attended by over 3,000 people. The meetings rooms have been used more than 700 times, and 159,000 books and recording, audio recordings have been borrowed by the 46,500 members. In addition, they've issued 845 new library cards. It's the most active of the five branches and has exceeded the lofty expectations that we had for it back in the 90s when the, when the branch libraries were being planned. I thank all of you on the commission for making this day possible. To County Supervisor Vince Long, who was a boy wonder under, under PA back in my day. To the seasoned captain, he is at the helm today, 25 years later. To my former colleague, Bill Proctor, we had a good time.
Great time.
It was a pleasure and a fun experience to serve with you, and I'm proud that you're still here.
Thank you.
And especially to Commissioner Brian Welsh, who honorably, ably, and graciously serves in the seat I once held, and who vigorously and steadfastly advocates for his constituents in an exceptional way, for the life of the county, and for his very capable aide, Kyle Frost. And finally, thanks to my family who are here today, of whom I'm very proud. Let me introduce them. Alex Hanley, who's the, please stand, Alex, CEO of Juris Surety Company, he's my handsome nephew and my godson. Wendy Spencer, as close as a relative as it gets, who is currently the CEO of Leadership Florida, and Ron Spencer, her husband, a great friend and former director of the Leon County Civic Center for 35 years. And finally, to my wife Sandra, of 58 years, who's my editor, my boss, and the love of life that keeps me straight. And to all of you, again, from the bottom and top of my heart, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next item, item number 18, Tallahassee Housing Authority Funding Request for the Third Phase of the Orange Avenue Apartment Redevelopment. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners?
Yes.
I did want to add, thank you. I, I believe Ms. Host, and there's going to be a formal dedication of this probably in November with the Commissioner's family in celebration of his birthday, so just want to put that down. Thank you so much.
November.
Thank you, sir. Next item. Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, thank you. This item is the Orange Avenue Apartments Third Phase Funding Request. The item presents a $1 million funding request from the Tallahassee Housing Authority to address a funding gap for the third phase of the Orange Avenue Apartments Redevelopment Project. The funding Commissioners allows the Tallahassee Housing Authority to apply for federal tax credits at the state level for Phase Three. When complete, this project will increase the number of affordable housing units on the site by 100%, from 200 units to approximately 410 units. This will be the largest affordable housing redevelopment project in Leon County. The total cost of the project so far is $110 million. The additional county funding will bring the total county and city contribution, which is equalized, to $11.5 million. Therefore, Commissioners, we are recommending option number one, which is to authorize the county administrator to allocate the $1 million in ERA2 funding to support the funding request. Shinkton, Lammy, as well as Brenda Williams are here to answer any questions the Board might have. I do have two speaker cards, Mr. Chairman.
Speakers.
The first speaker is Tiffany Hill.
Ms. Hill, name and address for record, please, ma'am. You have three minutes. Take your time getting up there.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Hill. I live at 1401 Lola Drive. I am a retired Army veteran. I served in the S.H.I.E.L.D., Storm, and CARE, and I am continuing to serve our veterans and also my community on the South Side. I want to speak on this matter because, yes, I do feel like they, they do need the money. They really do need the, the funding to start in Phase Three. However, the reason why I say this is because there's an agreement that they made with Orange Avenue United Tenant Association. A lot of you may not even have heard of Orange Avenue Tenant Association, which is the resident organization. There was a lawsuit, but it went into an agreement. And in the agreement, in Phase Three of the development, they shall make available 10 units with four bedrooms and four units with five bedrooms to accommodate returning residents. Returning residents will get units with the same number of bedrooms they previously had at the development if they meet the eligibility standards for the unit. Now, with this, I would say, please take into consideration that they kind of railroaded, in a sense, in my opinion, the Orange Avenue United Tenant Association, the resident organization, because they was not at the table, it was not really there to speak really on behalf of the people. I myself volunteered to dig into what's going on and to actually get lawyers that are outside of Tallahassee to come in and help this organization, which is black-owned. It was started by my father, Oliver Hill Sr., who had his name on the community building there, which was torn down, and no one ever, till this day, said, where's my dad's name gone? He has served relentlessly for the community on the South Side and surrounding areas for those people who are on low-income housing. They have received a proclamation, they were a nationally recognized resident organization, which really does not happen pretty often. They, they was not recognized in the application when they filed it for demolition. And on the HUD application for the SAC, it says, "I hereby certify that all information stated herein, as well as information provided in the company, the company here with, is true and accurate. HUD will prosecute false claims and statements. Conviction may result in criminal and/or civil penalties." And the question on the application stated, is there a residential organization that represents this community? And the answer was no. So I can forward you the agreement. The only thing that I ask for you is to make sure that they have a contingency plan, that they can show you due diligence, that they are doing what they're supposed to do for these people, and they're following the guidelines of the agreement. I'm not saying do not fund them, make them work, and show you proof that they're doing what they're supposed to do for these people. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Final speaker on the side, Max Epstein.
Name and address for record, please, sir. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Max Epstein, 1001.
Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Road. I'm here just to echo Tiffany's comments here and how important it is to make sure that this lawsuit is followed in the stipulations. I watched Tiffany and other residents go before the City Commission multiple times, telling them they were not receiving federal benefits. They received federal funding, and the tenants were pushed out without receiving what they were legally entitled to. And personally, my partner is a high school teacher, and she had many of the folks, the families, the kids, who were pushed out. They ended up going to homes that were not as nice farther away. It affected their performance. And this is because these stipulations were supposed to be there because they accepted federal funding. So I would like someone, the county, the city, to acknowledge the Fair Housing Act violations that were committed. I think someone, you know, deserves an apology here. Am I here to support this? Of course. We need redevelopment. But also, if you look, maybe someone can answer, but it looks like each one of these units costs $322,000. It seems to me you can build a pretty nice, single-family house. I don't know if that's in line with construction costs, but that's pretty high. And we, as public, or you, I tried, public officials, right? We have to use public funding in a responsible manner. So I would also say that Leon County and the city and Blueprint also have a history of not being completely honest on these federal funding applications. For example, Famu Way, when Blueprint accepted CDBG funding from HUD, certified that no historic structures would be affected, while at the same time negotiating under threat of eminent domain to demolish historic structures. They also certified, or actually said that no one would be displaced, and therefore they did not need an anti-displacement plan. While we all know many, many people were displaced, and none of them received federal benefits. And the very last example is the South Side Transit Center. There is a big heritage oak tree that's sitting on that site. It was not included in the environmental analysis that was submitted to the federal government. And how does that reflect on us? The fact is, you can just be honest and have a better outcome. Let's just do it right from the beginning, and I hope that you fund them, but scrutinize where that funding is going. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers?
That concludes our speakers.
Commissioners, I don't have to say how excited I am about that. I appreciate the speakers, and I appreciate the support for the item, especially from Ms. Hill, being her father a longtime resident there and the comments that she had to make. But I am very excited about this. Ms. Williams is here. She's done so much for the organization and so much to get us to this point. And thank you so much for your hard work and what you've done for us to get to where we are. And so I have Commissioner Minor in queue and Commissioner Proctor. I'm looking for staff recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and move option one for staff recommendation. You know, our staff has said that we need to develop 11,500 affordable housing units by 2045. So that is a, it's a great need here in the county.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recently, I think some of us took a tour of the Orange Avenue Apartments, Phase One and Phase Two. This is a good project that helps us address a need for affordable housing, so I'm proud to support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would say, too, concerns that have been raised by the two speakers, that our county commission's role has been to help facilitate the building of bricks and mortar. Our role has not been to negotiate with the flesh and the blood issues and the human relations matters, which Tallahassee Housing Authority has shown tremendous love and professionalism in treating hundreds of families that have been in such a huge project, have been displaced. You know, the Bible talked about when people came out of slavery in Egypt, that there were those who were murmuring after leaving, that we should have stayed and we could have did this and that, that we stayed there. And when there's a big human transformation project, you can go all the way back to the Bible, and everybody ain't pleased. Everybody ain't happy, no matter what you call progress. And so it is that this would not be without dissent on the part of some. The larger Commissioners, I say that about four or five of us were there four or five Saturdays ago, when the United States Secretary of Housing and Urban Development was on site. And I can tell you that had this project been jacked up, this project had been in any way soiled, tainted with mismanagement, poor management, trust and belief, the Secretary of the United States Housing and Urban Development would not have set foot into a mess. That was not going to occur. So the appropriate standards being met, the number of blocks that could be checked off positively, Secretary Marcia Fudge indicated in her own voice, in first person, that she was pleased with what she had seen. She came to our community and said in her own voice that Tallahassee Housing Authority was helping the Biden administration to meet the goals cited by Commissioner Minor just now, of not only affordable housing, but concerned about homelessness, and her stance with trying to secure housing options for people who otherwise would not have anyone going to bat for them. So I'm well pleased to support this wonderful motion. We have, we put skin in the game, and Brenda Williams has done, Tawana Thompson has done. Y'all have done, your board has done a fabulous job. And then on top of that, I had the opportunity of speaking with the primary contractor, Lori Dozier, a couple of weeks ago. And I said, Mr. Dozier, I'm fascinated and I'm really inspired by the work that I see. And Mr. Dozier offered a smile and said that he, too, was pleased and that the progress which was occurring there was such that he had never experienced before, in terms of groups of workers, the disposition, all of those things. He said it was the best job that he had ever managed at this point. So I was pleased with that. Brenda, I'm pleased with what you're doing, and I have confidence that, to whatever the court and tenant association worked out, this county commission, we don't follow up on courts and what happens with whomever. Y'all probably in court at least once a year with the number of tenants that you got. So I'm sure you all, if we had to keep up with all y'all's court cases, we wouldn't have anything else to do. But I would like also to say that toward the future, I am concerned that we have lost a number of Hispanic workers. I'm not saying that the workforce that we have have been undocumented workers, but I am saying that I'm concerned that all across Florida, Hispanic workers are disappearing. And it does concern me in terms of the potential impact for a workforce to not be able to execute along the timelines that have been projected. And if, in fact, the trend's not saying that it's affected this project, Brenda, but if this trend continues, it's going to add costs, additional costs, because the timelines won't be met. And in projects like these, when timelines are not met, Commissioners, you know, the price of completion becomes greater. So these things said, Mr. Chairman, I'm supporting the motion offered by Commissioner Minor. Thank you.
Commissioner Command.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I would like to say, I just want to commend the Tallahassee Housing Authority and as well as Ms. Williams, Shinkton, and Jalani. Prior to this meeting, I had Ms. Williams and Shinkton in my office, and, you know, I was just asking them a bunch of questions, and I was very impressed how thorough their responses were and how, and just how you guys understood the small details of the project. I'm going to support this motion, but I do just want to echo some sentiments that were said by some of our public speakers. We are spending, well, not we, through this public-private partnership, in Phase Three, this comes out to $320,000 per unit. And I think as we move forward as a government agency, I think we need to vet projects. I think we need to have some conversations about how do we stretch our dollars forward so that way we can get more units to curb this affordable housing crisis. You know, right now, in this total 380-unit project, 42 of these units are market-rate units, and we're getting a total of 338 units that are truly affordable housing. So I'm excited about this project. You guys have done a wonderful job, but I think we, as Commissioners down the road, need to have a conversation on how do we use our dollars to get more units? I understand that construction is expensive, but 320,000 per unit is never going to get us the results that we want to get in the endgame. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair. Comment, Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, I certainly support this agenda item. It's just a matter of driving down Orange Avenue, and you see the first phases that are reality right now. I want to commend Ms. Williams, Ms. Thompson, the entire staff. And this is just not work they started overnight. They started working on the revision down on Orange Avenue years ago, but we see it in fruition now. And I think clearly, the completion of all the phases is going to address affordable housing, which we know there's a great deficiency in Leon County, Tallahassee, for affordable housing. There's a great need in the community. So I certainly support it, commend them for the work, and just looking forward to the grand opening, where our residents can move in to that community and move into that housing phase. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All those that favor the motion on the floor, you can say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I would like to take Chairman's privilege here to ask for a proclamation, a motion to be made recognizing Brenda Williams and the Housing Authority's efforts to redevelop and successfully redevelop Orange Avenue Apartments. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Motion's been made by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any objection? Seeing none, show us passion unanimously. Next item, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the next item on your agenda seeks your consideration to return to pre-pandemic meeting procedures. As you will recall, the Board adopted temporary modifications to the county commission meeting procedures during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. While the majority of those temporary meeting modifications are no longer in place, the Board supported continuing to allow virtual citizen comment at its meetings amid the resurgence of the COVID-19 Delta variant back in September of '21. At that time, the Board opted to postpone returning to pre-pandemic meeting procedures until the community was no longer designated as an area of high transmission by the CDC. Since that time, with the continuous decline of COVID-19 cases, locally, Leon County was designated as an area of low risk for transmission by the CDC in March of '22. Also of note, the federal public health emergency for COVID-19 recently expired last month. Finally, Commissioners, we've had no citizen comments provided within the last six months until tonight, and the variety of other avenues available for citizen's comments continue. We're recommending option one, but of course, Commissioners, we will receive whatever guidance that you have for us tonight. With that, Mr. Chairman, we have several Zoom speakers.
Thank you. Before we get there, just to point that we have several Zoom speakers alone means that it's still providing value there, and this Board has set in a place of continuing this function with our county meetings, as it has allowed for greater access to county government. So before we even get to those speakers, I wanted to hear the Board out and see if there's a motion that we continue on, the way we've been continuing on with the virtual platforms that we have. Is there motion to such?
Still moved to go option two.
Option two's been moved by Commissioner O'Keefe. Is there a second?
There's a second. I'll secondly offer a proposal.
Second, what's your amendment?
Would you accept early amendment to basically cancel this for another year, and then get out of the back of the year, and then we can see what the situation is over the next 18 months?
Yeah.
Motion on the floor is for option number two, with the amendment that we would come back in 18 months, in one year, to look, to review again, to see what citizen comment is virtually. We do have speakers on the, on this item. Mr. Administrator, we'll take our speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First speaker is Will Crowley.
Will Crowley, 2308 Cypress Cove Drive. Thank you. Not 15 minutes ago, we heard a promise that county administration would work hard to earn our trust, that their priorities are our priorities as a community. And here, they want to save $3,500 by shutting people out of the process. I referenced the Wollani situation, where public comment was shut down, and people were not allowed to speak their voice. What are we doing here? I understand and I appreciate Commissioner Maddox for beating us to the punch here. But $3,500 a year, that's what, half of what y'all increased your personal discretionary accounts to a couple of months ago? I'm at a loss for words. I don't know. I don't understand where these ideas come from. I don't understand if it's confrontational or trying to remind the people how little influence they have in community affairs, to show that their input is worth less than half of what a commissioner's discretionary fund is. I'm not sure what the intention behind it is, but I can tell you that it hurts. It hurts me, but it hurts more than just me. It hurts all sorts of people who don't have the luxury of getting paid to put on a fancy suit and come downtown and argue for big business, or argue for, you know, this rent-seeking institution or that rent-seeking institution. Regular people who just want to know how their tax money is being spent and maybe, maybe convince you to fight for them. So please, I think kicking the can down the road is, it's ridiculous, it's absurd. It doesn't matter how many people participate, it needs to be there. So I reject out of hand this mealy-mouthed attempt at, you know, meeting in the middle with something that is unrecognizable. Let the people speak. Thank you.
Next speaker. The next speaker is Steve Martin.
Mr. Martin, naming and address for the record, please, sir. You have three minutes.
All right. You can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Stephen Martin. I don't think I gave him before. 2625 Stonegate Drive. Yes, was just mentioned, this is a cost of $3,500, not per meeting, but per year, which comes out to $500 per commissioner. And he mentioned your recent increase in expenses. I mean, I think the travel expense were recently allowed, increased by dwarfs, this in comparison. So, and these costs, as well as your salaries and staff salaries, are all paid by your constituents. And should your constituents be denied a means of expressing their concerns to you at your meeting, where major decisions are so often made? Yeah, the pandemic, whether it's over or not, post-pandemic conditions aren't going to return to pre-pandemic conditions. Snow days and sick days in school. You think they're going to do away with Zoom now in the future because of that, when snow days and sick days occur? I got a feeling they're going to continue to use it. And what would you recommend? A constituent who had concerns but was ill? Would you recommend they come into a meeting and expose others to that? Or that they be allowed to continue to speak virtually and not risk anybody's exposure? Or that they be allowed to continue to speak virtually and not risk anybody's exposure to it? I invite anybody there to tell me why you would advocate having them come into a meeting speaking in person versus speaking virtually. Thank you.
Next speaker. Next speaker, Max Epstein.
First of all, thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I would really like to see this continued permanently. I don't really think that we need to come back and reevaluate because this is an excellent way for citizens to have input. It worked perfectly today. It's worked very well in the past, and it costs almost nothing to the county to continue. $3,500 a year. You have an excellent staff. I always have trouble with the city and other places, but here they always do it right. I did want to spend this time to talk a little bit about some of the in-person input here because at times, other bodies allow comment at the beginning also, as well as the end. And this body in particular has taken several adjournments after controversial issues to come back hours later. And then sometimes after even the public hearing at 6 o'clock. I think this happened with Lake Munson a couple times. And one of our friends of Lake Munson members is in her 90s, and she dragged herself out here at 3 o'clock, and then things were adjourned. We didn't get back to talking about this until like 7 o'clock at night. So I think that there needs to be maybe some sort of a schedule. I think we maybe need to look at how public comment has taken to give an extra opportunity at the beginning. Maybe someone isn't feeling well and wants to say something at the beginning and then leave. But I encourage you to continue this permanently. I'll take the year if that's what it takes. But there's also a way to modify your rules right now to increase the citizen input to help folks out because it's not fair to make people wait for hours or to have surprise adjournments when people take time out of their day or take work off to come to a 3 o'clock meeting. It really does affect folks, and there's no real reason why someone, a citizen, has to wait six hours to speak on an item. So, thank you very much.
Next speaker. Final speaker on this item, Margaret Moore.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Hi, and my name is Margaret Moore, 1910 Monticello Drive. I'd just like to echo what the other speakers have said and request that y'all provide virtual participation permanently. Thank you.
Any other speakers? I have Commissioner Meyer, Commissioner Caban, and Commissioner O'Keefe in queue to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that, I think the county does a good job on citizen outreach and collecting input. You know, we do offer several ways for input. I think that this is a service that we should probably have permanently. But if, for those who haven't read the agenda item, you take a look at the statistics for the last six months. No one has used the service for the last six months. No one, zero. So in that, with that in mind, I think it makes sense for us to continue with the current access, allow that to happen for another year, see what the participation is. I think if we have the participation tonight that we have and then continue that for the next year, by all means, I'm going to fight to support this additional option for access. So I think that's one thing for people might be listening at home or watching us at home, this has not been used for six months. So I want to keep it. I want to make sure that the county maintains its reputation of being, it should maintain its reputation of bending over backwards to make sure that it collects citizen input and encourages participation in meetings. We do a good job of that, and we're going to continue to do a good job and take a look at what this option, providing this option to people. It's not been used for six months. I hope it continues to be, I hope it's used a lot more between now and a year from now because then we'll make it a permanent part of our meetings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just me personally, I have planned to support the motion. I would have supported the original motion as well, just because it's a service that people aren't using. I think it's very incostly, and I think that for a constituent or somebody in our community who may not have the access to get here, I think it's just, it's important that we offer that and we continue to offer that in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Keefe.
Mr. Chairman, this, you know, it's not a lot of money. It's community input, and I'm wondering what's the best way for us to get, for me to get back to voting just yes, this is our policy permanently? Maybe asking Commissioner Meyer to just second. What's the procedure?
It could be a substitute motion, or Commissioner Meyer could remove his amendment. Or, or you could rescind your motion, make another motion and see if you get a second.
Let's make it easy. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll rescind my friendly amendment. I think it makes sense. I mean, you know, I'm fine with the motion as I was originally made. If it's used, if it's not used at all the next year, maybe we can revisit, but I think having the option available to folks makes sense. And it's a small, it's a small effort. It doesn't cost that much money, and I do think it's important for us to show people that we are doing everything we can to encourage citizen participation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All those in favor of motion on the floor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Cummings. Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, I just wanted to weigh in very briefly.
I'm sorry.
I think it's important that our citizens have avenues to participate. The statistics might show right now that there hasn't been a lot of virtual involvement, but we all know that the pandemic changed the way of life and most of, 50% of the workforce works virtually from home. That's just a platform that we use right now. And so I believe, I can support the motion on the floor, which means that we are not, we are not right now excluding the virtual platform, but I believe it's the avenue for our citizens to not only express themselves, but it's an avenue where they can hear us and hear our opinion on important issues. So if there's an amendment on the floor to adopt it permanently as a platform for the citizens, I support that. But if the motion is right now, we visit it in a year, I support that as well. But I do believe that we as Commissioners should make sure that our citizens, especially our elderly citizens, have a means to be heard where they, you know, are inhibited from, from traveling to the meeting. So I support maintaining the virtual platform.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? Motion carries. Objection. We'll move now to item number 20, which is full board appointments for the Advisory Committee for Quality Growth, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and the Career Source Capital Region Board, COCA, Council on Culture and Arts, and the Planning Commission. Commissioners, there are reappointments. There were options for 1, 2, 3, 5, and 7. Can I have a motion for those reappointments? Motion for options 1, 2, 3, 5, and 7 has been made by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Meyer. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing none, we'll show it as approved. We'll go to option number four, which is an appointment of one nominee to the COCA Board for the remainder of the unexpired term ending September 30, 2025. Neil Mooney, Giovanni Williams, and Renee Williams are the candidates, are eligible Is there, is there a motion for, yes?
I would like to nominate Renee Williams.
Okay. Renee Williams has been moved by Commissioner Caban, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any objection? Seeing none, show it as approved. We'll move now to item number, to option number six, which is appointment of one citizen to the Tallahassee Leon County Planning Commission for the three-year term ending June 30, 2026. The eligible applicants are Jason Nauman and Joe Laurie Penrose.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Joe Laurie Penrose to the Leon County Tallahassee Planning Commission.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Proctor. Is there any objection? Seeing none, show it as approved. Mr. Administrator, do we have any more items on the general business agenda?
We do not.
Commissioners, it's 5:05. I feel like we can get through. How you guys feeling about getting through discussion time? All right, we'll start with the county attorney. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two items for the Board this evening. The first relates to an update in the opioid litigation settlements. One of the entities that the county entered into an agreement with to settle subsequently went into bankruptcy. The matter is making its way currently through bankruptcy court. That entity is ENDO, E-N-D-O. You've received information about these various entities in the past and various updates. A request has come in from our outside counsel for direction on whether to file a proof of claim in the bankruptcy proceeding just to ensure that we are identified as a creditor and with potentially get a disbursement from the bankruptcy court in any final disposition of the case. I need no direction from the Board unless you want to direct me not to file a proof of claim in the bankruptcy case.
Is there any such direction? Seeing none?
Thank you. The other matter relates to Florida PACE Funding Agency in a letter that the county received in January. It was referenced in the sustainability update that was part of your January 2023 agenda package, specifically Agenda Item Number 18. It acknowledged we'd received the letter and that Leo Counsel was looking at it. It makes certain assertions and representations based on a bond validation final judgment that was issued by a circuit court judge here in Leon County that it has autonomy to exercise jurisdiction statewide with no oversight from any county or city in the state of Florida, including Leon County. You may recall that in September of last year, the Board adopted a resolution authorizing the FACE, F-P-F-A, FACE Florida PACE Funding Agency to serve as a PACE administrator for residential and commercial PACE, subject to certain limitations and requirements for consumer protections, disclosure requirements, financial disclosures, certain complaint procedures, and reporting requirements. We were given no notice of the assertions that we made in the bond validation proceeding. Two other counties have already filed litigation against F-P-F-A to challenge these collateral assertions that were made in the bond validation proceeding. I would seek direction from the Board about whether to send a cease and desist and demand letter to F-P-F-A directing them to comply with the requirements that were outlined in the resolution and enter into the interlocal agreement that their attorneys said in correspondence in August of last year were amenable to F-P-F-A. And if they don't, for me to proceed further to represent the interests of the county and its constituents up to and including litigation if necessary.
Is there a motion to the county administrator, I mean, I'm sorry, county attorney's recommendation? Is there a motion to the county? So moved by Commissioner Caban, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Meyer. I would ask that we, because this is pending litigation, keep our comments to amendment.
Yes, of course. Mr. Chairman, if Commissioner Caban wouldn't mind, I'd like to add a friendly amendment to that so that we have a date coming back on July 11th at our next meeting.
Any objection? Yes. Any other comment? All those in favor of the floor, you can say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. I have nothing further for the Board.
Mr. Administrator. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I have nothing more.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor.
Dr. Cease mentioned the report that came out. What was the name of that report?
Dallas Report.
Is it possible I can get a copy of that? Are they in book form or?
Can we get, yes, we will do that, Commissioner Proctor.
I like to indicate that those are always helpful in terms of giving us a snapshot of some of the sociological issues that we don't always see. And just perchance, after reviewing it, there may be something that I'd like our Board to give consideration to. Commissioners, Ms. Perkins is here tonight, and I think you received that, Mr. Chairman, if you.
Yes, sir.
It was addressed to you, but I'll defer and allow you to lift it up, but I wanted to make sure that it was included in our comments tonight. My condolences to our Vice Chairman, Commissioner Cummings, to you and the Davis family for the loss of your mother, y'all's loved one. And please know that I, hearts from Leon County, go out to you. Commissioner, I'm asking that all the appropriate responses and reflections of our Board's love is extended to this family at this time. And then finally, do we meet again before, is this our last meeting for you? This is it? Okay. When is our next meeting?
You've got a budget workshop? Next, what's the date? Next Tuesday? Of course, yeah, and the meeting in July, of course.
Just in case I forget, I wanted to ask this Commission's permission to attend the Blacks in Government 44th Annual National Training Institute, which will be in August in Washington, Blacks in Government. And this is the 44th.
Is there a second?
Training Institute.
Second, is there any objection? Seeing none, show it as approved.
Those things being said, just another shout out, kudos to our staff persons who've been lifted up, who've warranted promotions. Congratulations, Ben, to you. Excellent credentials, background familiarity with the nuances of the work of government. One of the things that Commissioners is very, very difficult to teach, to transfer, and that is a perspective of the nuances of how we have evolved, how we've gotten to a certain place. And when a person can come on day one and hit the ground running, I think that's the statement, hit the ground running, and certainly we do not lose a step. He does not have to relearn the team's playbook. He authored the playbook. We're advantaged to have seasoned personnel and professionals. It is painful to contemplate some of the losses, which perspective changes in the personnel lineup of Leon County. And it just feels funny to see Commissioner Hose here and think about Alan Rosenwag there and Wanda is going on to. I mean, it's just a funny feeling, y'all, to, to think about the wonderful times. But to the leadership of our organization, we defer, we respect it, his choices. There's a reason that he's the internationally recognized administrator, reigning and defending champion right now. And we've had the great wisdom to follow his recommendations. And I find tonight no reason for us to deviate from recommendations that have been most beneficial to our county over the past few years. So we still got a great staff, pleased and proud, honored to be here, and we have a great Commission. We may not have, I mean, y'all ain't the prettiest Commissioner of all time. I'm trying to help y'all a little bit. I'm trying to help y'all. I mean, but we ain't the best-looking Commissioner of all time, but we probably, we the best Commissioner of all time, we'll say that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Proctor, while you make your comments, were you making, were you making motion to have, or do I need a motion to have a presentation for the Florida Civil Rights Museum to be presented in, at the beginning of our July meeting? Do I need a motion for that? Yes, you make that motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, and I take that consistent with the letter we received. I make that motion.
Motion been made, is there a second?
Yes.
Any objection? Show it as passed. Commissioner Hose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask for a proclamation to come back in September for, to declare September Hunger Action Month. Sorry, Commissioner Meyer, if I stole that from you. I know that's probably close to you, but Second Harvest would, would like to have that proclamation. So in September, Hunger Action Month.
Is there a second to that? Any objection?
Thank you.
Here's objection.
And I would like to thank the folks over at the VFW who gave me the honor of speaking at the, at the
at the, at the VFW Cemetery on Memorial Day. Always an incredible honor. I know that a lot of you are at Oakland and some of the other cemeteries. And once again, want to thank our Veterans Office for all the great things they do. We had a reef at several cemeteries, including Oakland and at the VFW Cemetery. So very well done on the county's part, and I wanted to thank the folks at the VFW. I wanted to reiterate to all of you my thanks for supporting the renaming of the library for Commissioner Host. And if you didn't catch that last part, I think we're going to have a event in November, which coincides with his birthday, and he's going to have family in town to celebrate that. So certainly look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and congratulations to everyone on their well-deserved promotion in the upcoming change. I would just like to request a proclamation for the July commission meeting to recognize Refire Culinary Training Program. Refire provides opportunities to people who have felony convictions by giving them training and tools to be chefs and job placement support. It was started back in twenty seventeen, and ninety percent of those who graduate have been able to find jobs within ninety days.
Is there a second? Any objection? Motion carries.
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Meyer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a proclamation for Greg Bobinger, who has served as the Director of National Mag Lab for nearly two decades and will be returning to the faculty this summer.
Motion made and seconded. Motion made by Commissioner Meyer, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. All those in favor who came by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Also, I spoke with the county administrator about this during our briefing, but I'd like to make a request for Cheese Tallahassee to come at some future county commission meeting and provide a presentation and an update on their work.
Second?
Second.
Any objection? Show it as approved.
Thank you. I also want to congratulate those who've been promoted to the, within the county administration. And then, of course, I'd like to offer my deepest condolences to Vice Chair Cummings on the passing of her mother, Ms. Mildred J.W. Davis. Madam Vice Chair, we will be with you on Thursday, supporting you and your family. And you know, it seems lately that we've lost a lot of people in this community over the last several months. Earlier today, I attended the memorial service for Amy Sacks, who left us at the age of thirty-eight, far too soon. Rest in peace, Amy. And then two days ago, the county's former IT director, Noberto Chan, passed away at the age of forty-seven. So rest in peace, Burke. You know, we never know how much time we have, so you know, I'll repeat the thing we always hear, which is go hug your loved ones tightly. You know, we hear that so often, it seems like a cliche, but it's important to be reminded. So find the people you love, tell them, you know, look them in the eye, tell them you love them and care about them, and then, once you've gotten your attention, you've made that connection, tell them again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Wise words. Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to request a proclamation for the Florida State Women's Softball Team.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any objection? See it as approved unanimously.
Thank you. Also, I need to, not need to, but would like to officially resign from the LCRDA board for a potential conflict that I will have in an upcoming blueprint meeting and a project I intend to discuss with the board. And in turn, I would like to make the motion to appoint Commissioner Meyer and to take my place.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded for Commissioner Meyer's appointment to the LCRDA boards. Any objection to such? Seeing none, show it as approved. Congratulations.
Next question for county administrator. I've gotten a string of complaints in the last twenty-four hours of just an abundant amount of trash on the intersection of Ocala Road and Pensacola Street. I know this is in the city. Is there anything that we could do to kind of address that, you know, cordially, respectfully, with our neighbors across the street?
We'll do that.
Okay, thank you so much. And last, just want to echo the sentiments for Vice Chairwoman Cummings' family, keep them in our thoughts and prayers while they navigate this time of loss. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. I had the opportunity to speak on behalf of the county at the North Florida Homeless at Risk Veterans, you know, the Stand Down twenty twenty-three there at the Lawson Center, and it was amazing. I know we have it every year, but all the services, well, so many services, service providers that are available for the veterans were there, and it was just an amazing weekend. They had a whole weekend of it, so I appreciate the opportunity to represent the county. I also just want to recognize our county. The National Association of Counties recognized Leon County with eight separate awards, and I think that's a tremendous feat, but I want to highlight one in particular, and that was given to the Leon County Children's Services Council in the category of children and youth. And of course, as you all know, I am the county's representative on the Children's Services Council. I think our executive director, St. Kergue, does a great job with the Children's Services Council, so we have been recognized by NACO. So just want to point out that recognition. And finally, I just want to thank my fellow commissioners, the county administration, and county staff for all the love and support that you have shown to me and my family, Don Aduff and my mother. It's a very difficult time, but certainly the support, outpouring of love has certainly helped us get through this trying time. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, commissioners, and Mr. County Administrator, as well as the county attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I too send my condolences on the passing of your mother. I'm sure the family is bereaved right now, and I want to send love and prayers your way. I know this is a tough time for you and your family, and we will all be there on Thursday to support you and be there for your family. I also wanted to ask, Madam Vice Chair, if I could, would you make the motion? Can you make a motion? Make a motion, can you? To present a proclamation for the July meeting to the BBMC for their tenth anniversary.
Absolutely. So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Motion made by the Vice Chair Cummings, seconded by Commissioner Caban, any objection? Motion carries the objection. The only other thing that I have, commissioners, is I am disclosing that last week I received a call from Damon Duvall Senior, who expressed interest in purchasing some real estate owned by the county. I refer Mr. Duvall to staff for further discussion and information. I'm making this disclosure on the record to ensure compliance with Article Seven, Division Two, Section Two, Six Seventy of the Leon County Code of Law, which requires disclosure of any communication that a county commissioner receives about a county real estate transaction. Aside from that, we are adjourned until our six o'clock. Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Proctor.
If I might submit one other point, Commissioner Caban's comment jar, my memory. I have a distress call today from Mr. Freddie Miller, who's requesting if they could get a couple of front loads of dirt or something down on Button Willow off of Crawfville Road. Button, B-U-T-T-O-N, Willow. The rain recently has been devastating, and I think I've seen projections for rain for the balance of this week. I would ask staff if we could, and I'd give them his information or whatever.
Mr. Administrator, can we get on that? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Seeing all the comment, we will be back here at six o'clock for our public hearing. We'll have one item. Thank you.